Please. The planning board, the board of adjustment meeting, Flemington Borough on Tuesday, February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. This in-person or virtual meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the public meetings app. Both adequate and accurate notice of this in-person or virtual meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hunter County Democrat and Courier news newspapers. On our about January twenty third, twenty twenty five and January nineteenth, twenty twenty five. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted on the door of the Borough Flemington Municipal Building located at the OK Park Avenue and any handicapped accessible entrances there too. Posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal club and distributed to all persons of any requesting copies of the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and maybe rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant for the board may make when considered in a judicial decision and a form appropriate to a judicial hearing. Must be maintained at all times. Please rise as you are able for the last.
States of America and two republics for which stands one nation under God.
We have a roll call please, Conmay.
Mayor Carroll here. Councilwoman Fisaro, Ms. Giffen.
Yeah.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Campion.
Here.
Weitzman here, Ms. Swingle.
Here.
Phil. Mr. Slender.
Here.
Mr. Daschmann.
Here.
Mr. Echo is excused. Mr. Hane.
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski.
Yeah.
And Mr. Clerico. And Mr. Troutman are excused.
Some money too, I'm actually thank you. All right, item one is a time for public comments. For any items not on the current agenda, there's nobody in the room. And I don't see any raised hands online.
Nobody said it. Times this online.
So we'll move right along to item two, man comments, please.
So just to the planning board knows, last night, the council introduced a parking restriction for residential parking only on West Road, which is having a serious parking issue. From other neighborhoods, parking on their lawns, parking in front of their mailboxes in their driveways and so. The council introduced an ordinance that Bell Street will be resident only and the police will be monitoring Allen Street to see if that parking situation migrates. East. The council also adopted two ordinances last night, one making. Spring Street one-way only. From. Bloomfield Avenue to Maple Avenue, heading north-south. And Maple Avenue. One-way only, heading east-west from Broad Street to all the way to Main. A part of that's already one-way. So that little piece was also turned away, one-way as well. And then weight restricted in a second ordinance, Bloomfield Avenue from Spring Street to Broad Street. To four tons and weight restricted Spring Street from Maple Avenue to Williams Avenue to four tons. So what the, those recommendations all came from the parking committee, just through Jay Troutman, our traffic engineer. To keep the, try to keep the flow of traffic around the new hotel project and apartments. To keep people as much as possible on Main Street. You know, or to go all the way down to Williams if you're heading south to like Route two-two south. Otherwise, prefer Route P to go up Maple Avenue and onto Main Street to take a right to get out to thirty-one or a left to go out to two oh two. Weight restrictions are to keep large delivery trucks off of our local roads. We have already a number of roads in Flemington that are weight restricted to four tons, so it's just added to that existing ordinance as well. We had one member of the public there from Spring Street and no public comments at all. So.
That's it. Okay, thank you. All right, item three, council comments.
It all of the mayor said.
You were at the same meeting, huh?
At the same meeting. I'm enjoying myself.
Okay, good to know. All right, item four, HPC comments, Dennis.
We had our meeting last week and we approved two items, twenty Main Street addition of an additional floor. And thirty-nine Mine Street building modifications. Eileen sent both of those out to the planning board. And then the only other thing I'd mention is we are doing a historic house tour again this year. It's Saturday, June twenty-first, from eleven to five. So looking for any volunteers to assist. If you volunteer, you get a free ticket. So if anyone's interested, let me know, but we're excited.
Yeah.
That's it.
Houses are gonna be done, Dennis? Were you searching for houses?
We've, we've got five new houses lined up.
My gosh, that's great.
Yeah.
Good, good. Excellent work, thank you. I highly recommend it. I won't be there this year unfortunately. Okay, item five, professional reports. I did ask Beth she didn't have a report, but do you have anything?
I guess.
Okay, good, good. Oh, we're now looking along here. Item six, approval of the minutes from February eleventh, regular meetings were distributed. Does anybody have any, anything for Eileen, any little amendments or any timeouts or anything to report? Okay, and can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Second.
We call the vote on that, please, Eileen.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisaro?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Upstate.
Sorry, Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Shoe?
Yes.
Mr. Slender?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, item seven, resolution HCDC, application twenty twenty four oh eight.
I'm just making some final changes for council's review approval. We'll have that well before the next meeting.
Okay. All right, excellent. Well, we will table, we can table that to the next meeting, yeah. On the next agenda, agenda moves along for then. Item eight, resolution, the twenty twenty-four annual report. That was sent out previously. Did anybody send any comments in, any issues were made? So it's as it was when we last saw it. All right.
And I know, I think the issue was you hadn't seen it before the last meeting.
That was.
You let send it out on. Just at that. It's one that I missed to.
Yeah, that's okay. All right, so can I have a motion to approve, well, yeah, a motion to. Yep. Approve that report as an accurate representation of the one I went forward with.
Yep.
Move. Take the role on that, please, Eileen.
So that was Mayor and Hannah?
Yes. Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman?
Yes.
Ms. Fisaro?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Upstate.
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Shoe?
Yes.
And Mr. Slender.
Yes.
Thank you.
Eileen, I'll add those. The vote, I also have to change the date of the regulation itself.
And actually, I took the liberty to change the. Alternates and I moved Mr. Slender up and.
Perfect.
So I can send that to you.
That'd be great.
I had also changed the date and all of them.
I did, wonderful, thank you. You're leaving something there.
A love fest here. All right, can we, are we all good? We're moving on. Item nine, chair items. Do you want me to go back to the man?
Yeah, no, I have two items that I forgot to add from my report. One is that I think that I actually found a conflict attorney.
I saw that the last minute.
Um, he's going, soon as he gets the full Nova Doma package to him, he'll be able to.
He has this.
She's in the.
Oh, he gave it to him, so, yeah, so right now it looks good based on a cursory look and he said he was gonna do, has his staff to do deep, deeper diving. But he thinks he'll be able to do it and.
Are you gonna approve him?
I would hope so.
No, I'm just saying, like, tonight, like.
Well.
He wants to.
Well, I don't think he has, he ordered a full conflict.
Gotcha.
He didn't.
Yeah.
We'll have to do it in the.
He, he think it was just this afternoon.
Yeah, he, he looked at it. He didn't think, he thought it looked pretty good.
Okay, that's the new hire you're talking about, okay.
Yeah.
And I think actually with Nova Domas, there's a, a situation that it might be involve a, a experience.
Or a disturbance, it's possible.
Yeah, possible, so they might have to come back for completeness. I did talk to, on another matter, to their attorney and he's contacting his client to discuss, so.
So, and I did, and I did tell that too. I mean, I can, I mean, I can disclose the issue. So, so it's Joe Sredola.
Okay.
From, who was one of the attorneys that John Blardo recommended, who. Is with Chief Francisco Bateman, blah, 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 blah. And I think he's our internship's attorney.
Yes.
Right? He's our internship's attorney. So he, you know, I asked him about, I left him a message about him or any of his partners being free or that we would even change the meeting if we had to and.
It's good to have a conflict attorney.
And he called back and he said, I'm actually free last night and I'm flattered that you asked, so. Yeah, so he, and his rate isn't excruciating, even though it's cast on the escrow, buck ninety, which is way lower than other attorneys that I've talked to, which doesn't say that.
Way lower than your rate?
So, so I was, you know, like I said, even though it gets tested by escrow, it was, you know, but it's, it's, he was on my, on my top list to call. I was just getting ahold of. Everybody and waiting, you know, I weigh everybody out and say, are you, can you do it? And then by the time they check and whatever, and they check the partner and. It's been a very long process, so I'm hoping this all works out. And the other thing I just wanted to announce is Jim Hill has not officially resigned from the board because he didn't send it to the right person, so I don't have to accept it as a nomination. By law, you're supposed to send it to the clerk and you did not, and I didn't let her know, so.
Can you sort of send it to the clerk?
You have to send it to the clerk, that's the law. Resignations go to her. Or not me, not Eileen, not Karen, so technically you have resigned. But he really, but this is his last meeting and it's been a pleasure, Jim. I've known you a long time and I'm sorry you're leaving.
Yeah, well, I am too. It's just too many, too many things going on.
He just let us know last night, so, when I got home from my council meeting.
I thought that was a good time. You could sleep all night.
Yeah, exactly. No, and I did on behalf of the board, even though he hasn't officially done it properly, send, send a message to him saying, thank you for his years of service on this board. I know he's had years of service. He's been my day as mate for a long time and he agreed to be my vice chair. I really am grateful for that.
Or term of advice, depends on which way you want it.
Exactly.
I do matter at the second.
Oh, yeah, so it was not announced at the last meeting's council meeting because I didn't have his emails like that and.
Yeah. I apologize, it's just that I might get to the way once in a while, at least, so I gotta do other things.
I want that talent to say no to stuff. I haven't, I haven't figured it out yet, but, you know. You know, just so the board is aware, I will be putting Mr. Goshnet into Jim's unexpired term and Mr. Hane into. Mr. Echo into alternate number one, Mr. Hane into alternate number two, and we'll be searching now for another alternate number four.
Great.
And thirty, so. Links up, smooth up. We're in Alice in Wonderland, so.
We've been with only two alternates for a while. We can do it, right, guys? We can do that, sweetie, right?
Yeah, I mean, it gets dicey on the deeper.
Yeah, that's one time's ever problem. This is, if someone has to miss a meeting and then you wanna make sure that the applicant has it before, but it's doable.
Right.
Totally doable. We just have to all be upfront with each other. If you're gonna be away and you know something's coming up, we have to figure it out because we have to make sure we have nothing. So that's all. I asked the rest of the board to do well.
And the variances are the most important too, you know, when we know one of those is coming up, then we definitely have to make sure that.
Exactly.
Whoever's gonna be here.
I'll try and remember to mention it and say, hey, let's do a roll call, make sure we can cover it and that we'll have a quorum, but if I forget, please will I know?
Yes.
Thanks. We'll be watching every meeting, right?
Go up there.
Need somebody to remind me what to do. But yeah, so that is said, sorry, I don't know what I did.
Isn't that something I want to do? I'll call you occasionally, just a heck of it.
Thank you. You can always sit there and I'll be.
Yeah, that's right, I'll sit up there.
I have alternates on Shetree HBC if you want, but I feel like he wants them off.
Oh, Shetree, that's the.
Shetree's great.
Shetree's the.
I understand, you wanna give away things, I'm glad you're about there, so.
Redwood Horster from Syracuse.
See, is that the perfect resume?
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna be an alternate on Shetree.
You can wait.
Let me, let me think.
I'm serious. You can give away trees to people.
Always to drop this and just jungle something else.
Say, oh my god, what do you think you can have a life? Right.
I will tell you where Shetree meeting, meetings usually go longer than planning board.
Oh, well.
You're, you're what you said.
You're Neil.
He's so new, people say that.
We'll all go ahead.
Okay.
Good, no, I wish.
All right, so things from me, I wanted to check, I don't, I hope I'm the last one to do it. If anybody else didn't, the stormwater videos everyone's supposed to watch.
Yeah, I watched it.
Make sure you send that and watch it and send the email to Terry Room.
Okay. I watched him, I just didn't realize, okay, I'll send it.
Yeah, send him an email because he needs to have a little.
Oh, I knew I was supposed to do that either.
Just an individual email they have.
Just a mini mail, so then he has.
Oh, I see.
I watched it in the storm, big snowstorm, when was that?
I watched.
Which one?
I watched it in the summer, so that's why.
I wasn't playing the late.
I was pointing at the emails and I'm like, I don't remember doing this, so I put it on.
Is it okay that I send it to Eileen that I watched it?
Yes, I forwarded it to Terry. Anybody listening, me, I saw, and I got a response from Terry as well as to.
He just needs something if he gets audited so they can show who, who wants it, so please do that. New member training, that one on, oh, April, does it, what we just told, April twenty-eighth, he can do that as his new member trainer for board, can he?
I think, I think so from what I've seen. I just sent confirmation over to the organizer who asked me to pass it along.
Right.
Just to make sure, but the new member training is state required and just because they're offering it in one county and the board's located in another, I don't think that should make any difference.
Different, I did mine in a different county.
Exactly, so I, I think, I think it's fine.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be by any, any just planning officials, so.
He's always back to be in person. Yeah.
Or other.
So I think it says right in the flyer that it also does the.
It says, so examples.
I just send that to Adrian.
This is on the sat, this is on the sat.
Like, where he's.
Okay.
Okay, so.
It's, it's not too far away, it's, I don't know, Girl Scout headquarters, I was.
Saturday, the twenty-sixth.
I think it's twenty-sixth, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I had gotten the number mixed up. But then I did write twenty-eight, then that's why.
So then do we count, have given names for the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just say yes.
To me and then I would have to do a purchase order and send that over to them to get you registered.
Is there, we have to fill out a form?
Yeah, I think there's a form that's attached to it.
Yeah.
Let me take a look at it tomorrow and.
It's always better to put it in person. Can't imagine that online thing was very much fun. And also you get to chat with the people who are involved and, you know, it's just a good thing. I think, I would, I would like everybody to be able to do it again, but we can't afford everyone. Do it regularly, do you know what I mean? It's been a while, it's too refreshing.
Well.
I'm gonna say one of those videos from the stormwater link I got, I went down, on that link that he sent us, I went down and there was a really good video. I thought it felt good, it was like an hour, I just sat and I was, and it, it was basically for planning board members about all sorts of different things.
Yeah.
That was a really good video on that, on that page.
On the one app.
Yeah.
And I think you and I, and you and I, I think, have talked about, and I've done it for some other boards, just doing little refreshers.
Yeah.
On particular issues, like I did one for one of my boards, they just wanted to put a refresher on the differences between C and D variances. Proofs required, that sort of thing.
Right.
You know, just a little member responsibility, that, you know, so if there's anything in particular that you kind of wanna kick around, if you see that.
Yeah, especially if we're gonna ask you, if it's a meeting for staying light, we might as well use the time once we've got out of the house, do a little bit of something.
Sure.
A little bit. You went out and dressed, we might as well, you know, in the snow. I just thought something while we were talking and I know it's gone completely out of my head, so that'll have to come back another time. Other than that, still say, well, we have the next meeting March eighteenth. We're not quite sure what's on there yet because it depends if this Nova Doma situation.
Well, they won't be on the eighteenth because the, the council was, had a conflict with that meeting.
He said the twenty-third.
Twenty-three, it was, it was, that's right, so we'll see, so we're, we're on council, but we might have to do a completeness.
But. And they might ask for completeness and the public hearing at the same time, I'm not sure. I mean, what does that look for?
Exactly, if you were raised.
Send a letter on their direction.
But although, I don't.
But we do have the resolution for the Hunter County Democratic Committee, an extension for Captiva depending on what Cara has. But Cara, you're not there on the eighteenth as well. I don't think Mr. Clerico is available on the eighteenth of March. So, I mean, we could certainly do the resolution adoption, that's easy. It, it really, so I, I sent a, I don't wanna talk about it too, too much, but I did send some questions to Captiva that I wanted to have answered for the board. Just so we could really understand exactly what it is that they were asking for, so you could appropriately consider it. And know what standards we needed to apply to the request. I have not, I got some of the answers, not fully everything in the way that I wanted it, so I, I expect I should be getting it soon.
Well, I, I, on Friday of last week. The current owner took over the project. Called me and I was at a doctor's appointment and I was supposed to come back on Saturday and didn't get a chance and he apparently had some planned. Big surgery on Monday of this week, so I felt terrible that I didn't get ahold of him, so I don't know how soon you're gonna get any answers, because it was a big surgery.
The, they're legal as opposed to the others, so I may, but you never know, because some of them. One of the questions that I did have was, as I understand it, there's been a change in ownership. So I kind of wanted to understand what impacts that may have as a whole on everything, so I kind of asked him to look into, you know, the redevelopment agreement aspect and, and. That to see if there is, there may not be, I just don't have enough information and certainly that's not all in my purview, so I want to make sure that appropriate people look at that. So that may be impacted, but the one question I had for the board for that term was the legal standard and the legal statutory section that they were seeking to invite in the extension of it. That's what I want to hear.
And is there a question whether they even need to apply for an extension? Do we, do we?
That's why I want to know what they're asking for.
Right.
That's, you know, so I, they are asking for an extension and then the response I got back for extension pursuant to statute. Now I wanna know statute so I can really understand because they may or may not. But if they think they do, then there's a reason why they think they do, so I wanna make sure that I understand that.
Right, or they could just be thinking they do and they.
It's quite, it's quite possible and it could be a them suspender's request, which is fine also.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanna be able to tell you what you need to look at this and review it under.
Okay, thank you. So let us know when we know that and we'll know whether that's up. So it could be a, a day where we do a little bit of refresher on something.
We also should do, depending on the conflict attorney. That point that, that meeting has.
Right. Yeah.
But I do have notes that Cara, you're not available and Bob is not available on the eighteenth.
Was that right? I got mixed up between who was.
Because that is one of the ones that is off schedule.
Yes.
Because of.
Yes, of the election, special school election.
So, like I said, I mean, we, we'll have the Democratic Committee resolution for that night, but that's, you know, everyone will have that in plenty of time, so if anyone has comments or changes, we can have that in final, final forms, it shouldn't be an issue with that.
But if that's the only.
And the, of the, of the conflict attorney. That should be simple, we have plenty of resolutions to that, in fact.
Right. We may just need to do that then, we'll see.
Yeah, we have time.
Yes, well, that sounds good. All right, the next item is, is still on committees and starting up some of the other ones is still on me to set some of them going. But I am, hopefully everyone appreciates not working too hard at the beginning and the end. I don't know, I do. That's not a schedule enough. And I've also reached out for the zoning, which we didn't start out, but I did reach out to Councilman Parker. Because we have the data the FCP promised last year, that was issued through, but I've asked him to.
Did you get it?
I thought it was.
I did get it a week ago, but I, I reached out to Mr. Councilman Parker today to see where we want, where we go with this, what the general feel is based on. The feels that we had last time and the issues that came through, whether, which way we wanna move ahead before we start ahead.
Okay, so we will have our.
From the governing body, which way this wants to go, what we want to do with this data and.
From the governing body that's going to be making the decision.
Well, no, 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 they're not gonna be making the decision, it's, it's just which way the committee wants to go with analyzing what we analyze.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
Just to. I feel that last year, there was. Maybe the approach caused consternation and I'm just trying to gently not cause consternation to the process. Does that make sense? Maybe, right, that's what I'm saying. Nothing's very, nothing's official or unofficial right now. We're just moving ahead slowly and just letting everyone know it's. Softly, softly. Does anybody else have anything for a chair item that they'd like to raise tonight?
Quick, quick, I don't know if it's us, but I, I saw that email that Eileen forwarded for the state plan cross-acceptance, but we have to do anything with that, because even though it's like.
Just went at the meeting yesterday, explaining to the governing body, because apparently, I asked Beth, what do we need to do, but then she said, it's a governing body decision whether we take part, right? So Beth gave you a, a talk about what we should maybe do. What was the agreeing understanding what the council wanted to do?
I mean, the council's gonna. Before was this through the county, you know, planning and going to the state plan meeting. I have a legal question for you. Because Beth said that, she was talking about this state planning committee that every municipality supposedly is still gonna participate.
Okay.
And she said that it's a governing, like, who appoints that? Because in our form of government, unless otherwise said, the mayor makes all appointments. And I don't know what the law actually says on this.
I mean, that issue I'd have to look at. I know that the state planning committee and, and the issue itself is for the governing body to review and decide whether or not to participate and not the board. And for municipalities that are within the Highlands jurisdictions, they can appoint or basically allow the Highlands Commission to be their representative. And they can also have their own representatives, you can have dual representation. As far as for this form of government, who would appoint that committee? I mean, that's a Chris question, but, you know, I don't know that off the top of my head.
So that's where we're at, whether the governing body wants, wants to take part and how we take part, right?
My, my, my statement last night was that we do listen to the general, that that we would want to participate.
Tell what we're using.
There's, we have to. Take it back to the governing body, if that, that if we don't submit anything by the end of March. It is assumed by the process that we are all good with.
Right.
With everything, so if, if there needs to be appointments made and all that has to happen, it should happen pretty soon because we're ready at the end of.
That's why I wanna know who makes the appointments, because we were, I was asking Beth, well, how many people is, you should be having, and she said, well, that's too big, it's unwieldy. And she said, I would say like a couple from the governing body and a couple from the planning board and some professionals and she said, I'm happy to, you know, help you do this and. And then somebody from the council, you know, the council president said, well, what about members of the public? And see the look on your face, Beth didn't make that look, but she kind of tried to gently say, you know.
Everything's written all over my face, you know.
No, I mean, that was my reaction too, is, you know, you, you get this out, that's when she made the comment, it gets too big, it's unwieldy.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean, the FCP, that was also a suggestion representative.
No, that was on the party.
Yeah.
By the council president, was the commission, business community on the party committee. But, so I, I'm trying to get clarity on appointment and process.
I mean, if you need me to look into it, I certainly can. I mean, Chris will probably know off the top of his head, I would think.
The state plan, let me tell you, he wasn't even born when the state plan was going through its death march in two thousand and one. I remember it well.
He wasn't the one?
I'm being facetious, but you know.
All right, okay.
I'm definitely older than him, I would say that.
He was still in high school, probably.
I'm just saying my middle kid was born in two thousand and one, not my oldest, my middle.
But you like that expression, the death march of the two thousand and one state plan?
Yes.
We remember it well, right?
Yep. Yep.
Jeff remembers it.
I remember.
I remember it. It was like taking knives to that big sign, uh, chicken hood of the county.
Now, I'm understanding that we, we're comparing whether we need to, we, we agree with what it's saying, whether, and it would have. Now, am I understanding that we're, we, we're comparing whether we need to, we, we agree with what it's saying, whether, and it, it would affect anything that's within our, uh, planning and order, is that right? Is that the way we're, what we're comparing or looking at?
Right, well, it's always a concern how the state decides to define us.
Correct.
You know, I like to continue to try, try to define us as rural as possible.
Yeah.
But then they say, oh, you'll get money if you're not rural, but we never get money because Newark, Camden, Trenton, Hudson County gets all the money. They promise us money, they screw up our stuff and then we never get money, so. You know.
Good voice.
Well, it was what killed in two thousand and one.
My, the, the unasked question last night for me was, what happens if we are assigned or replaced into a bucket that we don't wanna be with the ones, but I don't wanna be with Trenton, I don't believe we can be anywhere.
We're, we're still one tiny town.
I don't think, I don't think that we're Sussex County, but.
No.
But we, we should be more like.
A three and a half, four, yeah.
Three and a half.
If we don't like it, then we, we tell them we don't like it, that's all, maybe we tell the county no, we let the county, the county's willing to pay to do the battle, so.
Yeah.
We let the county do our battle.
Which is why I'm saying if we wanna, if we, if we have disagreement with stuff that's in the goals of the state plan.
Right.
We're supposed to not only articulate those and let the county fight for us, but we're also supposed to theoretically say how we're, if there is a consistency, what we're supposed to maybe sort of do is to say, well, how could we align our set of planning documents with the broad statewide goals if there's an, if there is a consistency, but I that, that's been a very nebulous process over the years, it's been, there's, there's too much low control, the, for that to actually end up happening, but but, but I, 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 I mean, if we wanna do something substantive, we got like three weeks to get it done, and that's, that's, that's what I'm, and it may just very well be that if, that the committee looks at it and Beth looks at it and it's like we're good, it's good enough to not expend the energy, then.
Well, we're six is the hearing up at the county, uh, building on twelve, um, if they don't actually call the chicken coop. Um, but, uh, it's open to the public. I'm pretty sure if you wanna make comments, you have to, you're supposed to re-register, or at least register when you're there, but it is not just for elected officials in the planning board, anybody can go. And I think it's. Uh, I think the one that is, it's, it's definitely.
Make comments early during the meeting.
You can send in comments ahead of time as well. You're allowed to do that, so.
And is that meeting when they're going to suggest, we, we would hear what group they're putting us in, or if then, or we don't.
No, I think the state plan's already out.
The job.
It's from six, it said, it's six to eight P M on Thursday.
The, the, the plan is, was released back in December.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's been.
In the email that, that was forwarded, there's a link to the plan.
Okay. Apologies, and we can go and see if anything jumps out in the meeting. Wait for further instructions.
Yep.
Fair enough, thank you for raising that, though, and I just watched Beth's thing as well, I'm sure I'll watch what Beth said. And the, the, the recording was out already last night, so. Anybody has any thoughts? No, okay, then let's move on to, um, item ten, did I, I didn't see any bills.
No, no new bills came in and no new script checks were coming, so.
There we go. And we'll move straight along, do we need to go into executive session?
We do not, excellent.
Then, um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Someone.
All in favor?